I would like to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 21st, 2016. If you please join us for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint. Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Clint.
Excellent, thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the agenda. Councilman Manning.
I move adoption of the agenda adding Resolution 16-75 to the consent agenda under number 12A.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. The first item on our agenda this evening is to accept a community partnership grant from Centerpoint Energy and adopt Resolution 16-74, amending the budget. Centerpoint Energy offers a community partnership grant for the purpose of helping cities purchase safety equipment and fund safety-related projects. Centerpoint Energy awarded grant funds to the Coon Rapids Police Department in the amount of $2,500 to further the goals of its HeartSafe program. The city of Coon Rapids continues to be a heart-safe city with a community-wide effort to educate citizens on the dangers of sudden cardiac arrest. The community partnership grant will be used towards the purchase of CPR training mannequins, AED trainers, and replacement materials for current equipment. And the anticipated total equipment cost is $5,000, with the community partnership grant providing approximately 50% of the funding for the equipment. The remaining matching funds will be provided from the Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association. I'm sorry, was somebody supposed to come up and tell us that? I thought that was interesting, it was all right here. Somebody want to come up? Yeah, can yell at me or yeah.
Couldn't set it better myself, so. Brian's going to accept the check with the mayor, $2,500 and everything you said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, you want to say a couple words about HeartSafe though?
Yeah.
About what we're going to do with it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us. Well, thank you to Centerpoint Energy for this grant. As you guys know, we fund this program exclusively through donations and fundraisers. We don't ever ask the city or the taxpayers to fund this program. And over the last almost four years, funding like this has been a critical part of training over 13,000 residents of this community. We've also done grants to seven businesses in town to either completely purchase an AED for them or to give them money towards the purchase of an AED. And we've trained over 60 businesses, so obviously for this equipment, for this gear, it costs a lot of money, 13,000 people, put a lot of wear and tear on my duct tape strapped equipment, so this is going to go to buy us some new state-of-the-art equipment and really take this program further. So I can't thank the city enough for accepting this grant and in particular Centerpoint Energy for giving the grant because this is going to buy a lot of wonderful things for us, so thank you.
I was just going to have you clarify that the mannequins you're purchasing are not like mannequins, they're spelled differently.
No, these are new brain dolls and I actually have their LED lit that actually shows the blood flow going from the heart up the arteries into the brain, so the people that we train actually get a visual, you know, they could literally see the benefit that they're providing with the CPR, they can actually see that blood traveling up. They're five hundred bucks apiece, so I need at least three, maybe four of them, so.
Do they play the songs to analyze?
They don't, they're not quite that fancy. What are my iPods for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Geisler, second by Wells, to adopt Resolution number 16-74, accepting the community partnership grant from Centerpoint Energy and to amend the 2016 budget. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And then we're going to turn everything over to Chief Wise.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, it's going to be a lot of police activity tonight in the council chambers. But thank you for, for those of you who don't know me at home, my name is Brad Wise, I'm the police chief here for the city of Coon Rapids, longtime Coon Rapids resident. And as you know, Mr. Mayor and council, it's a privilege and also a tradition for us to introduce our newest police officers. In the city of Coon Rapids, it's very important to us that our officers build a connection with our citizens. That relationship is critical to our sense of safety and security in our community. So tonight, I'm going to introduce to you Alex Hatstrom, our newest police officer. Alex was born and raised in Coon Rapids, Minnesota, although he moved out of Coon Rapids as a freshman in high school. Initially, after graduating from high school, he pursued a career or was pursuing education in IT, which has interestingly become a bit of a theme with our most recent hires lately, but somewhere along the way in college, he decided to use his words that he might switch his career goals and go into the family business, which is law enforcement, and I'll explain that a little bit later. So while in college at Metro State University, he began working as a community service officer for the city of Centennial Lakes and later for the city of Blaine. And I think you also have heard from me that being a community service officer is a very challenging position, and it's a great way for somebody to prove that they're ready to serve their citizens as a police officer. So as I said, he was a Metro State student where he earned a Bachelor of Science in Law Enforcement. Initially, I graduated from college, he started a law enforcement career at St. Cloud, but as a police officer in St. Cloud, at some point, he concluded that Coon Rapids might be a better fit for his long-term career goals. I happen to agree with that conclusion, it is a good fit for him, and we're happy to have him here, we're extremely excited to have him here. Interestingly, his last name might be familiar to some of you in that his father, John Hatstrom, only retired last year in 2015 after 29 years of service to the citizens of Coon Rapids, with his last position being a captain of our patrol division. So ironically, on his retirement, it gave the opportunity for his son to come work for us, and here he is all this time later. So now we look forward, we were jokingly saying, to 30 more years of that Hatstrom sarcasm in the office. But anyway, we're happy to have Alex as a member of our department. His first day as a trainee was February 8th. Since that time, he's been trained and evaluated on a daily basis. Our training, as you've heard, is a very stressful process. We do that on purpose to make sure we've hired the right person for the job, for the very difficult job. And in the case of Alex, we believe we have done just that, which is where we are right now. So Alex, tonight, you're officially graduating from our field training program. Symbolically, we removed your trainee badge, as you've now earned your permanent badge, which is number 150. Nobody will ever wear badge number 150 except for you. There's a couple of things about this badge that I want you to remember. Number one, this badge represents all the time and effort by the people who had a hand in your selection and training have had in you, they believe in you, that's why you're here. The second, and probably, well, in fact, certainly more important, is that it's the citizens' badge. This belongs to the citizens of Coon Rapids and they're entrusting you with it. So make sure you always take time to honor this badge and do what's right for our city. So you have become a proud member of an organization of dedicated professionals. On behalf of the organization, I welcome you and our police department family. Know that your peers and colleagues are going to do everything they can to help you be successful. So with that, the time has come for the pinning, so I'll ask his father, retired captain John Hatstrom, to come to the front to do the pinning of his son.
You ready?
Ready.
All right, I can hold it, raise your hand. I, Alex Hatstrom.
I, Alex Hatstrom.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
Of the United States and of the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Kind of started out with an off cadence or made it a little difficult for him, but.
We did say we made the process unstressful.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, the process is stressful, that's right, including the swearing hands. So now, do we have some representatives of the newly-formed Coon Rapids Women of Today here? We do? All right, well, why don't you come up to the front? All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. And assume that this works, it does work if you get close, there we go. All right. Whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today have set aside July 1st to recognize the many community activities of dedicated women of today across the state, and whereas, Minnesota Women of Today is an organization of over 1,200 members in over 60 communities, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today and the Coon Rapids Women of Today are dedicated to actively promoting such public awareness and service programs as Can Do Canines, Breaking Free, True Friends Camp Friendship, and the March of Dimes, as well as projects, educational programs, and fundraisers for the Coon Rapids area, and whereas, the Minnesota Women of Today provide personal enrichment and leadership training for members of all ages, and whereas, the Women of Today believe that through us, great lessons can be learned, worthy deeds performed, and a hand of fellowship extended to millions of women everywhere, and now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim July 1st, 2016 to be Minnesota Women of Today Founder's Day in the city of Coon Rapids. So who can, tell me who wants to start, and then you can all introduce yourself, here we go.
Well, I'm Jenny Orin, I'm the president of the group, and you kind of said everything I was going to say.
Perfect.
I memorized the speech, and then as you were talking, I'm like, I don't know what to say, because that's what I was going to say. But I also grew up in the city of Coon Rapids and was away for a while, and I'm very honored to come in and start up this chapter, and we're really looking forward to serving the community in any needs, and we're happy to work with you and always, we're not, don't hesitate to ask us for help.
And where and when will you be meeting?
We meet at Cup Foods in Riverdale, and 7 o'clock at the first Monday of the month.
7?
PM. Yeah, PM.
And I'm Betsy Rossel, I'm the secretary for Women of Today.
And I am Kelly Muncink, and I am the state delegate.
I'm Beth Clifford, and I am the internal and external program manager.
I'm Barb Carlin, and I'm just a member.
Well, I thank you all for coming, and all the best to your new organization, and I just hope it has a great partnership with Coon Rapids for many, many years to come. So thank you. All right, so we need to, let's see, do we need to officially adopt that then? Why not? So we'll make that motion.
Sure.
We don't need to?
Sure.
Okay, we're good.
Do you want to?
Sure.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation declaring July 1st, 2016 as Women of Today Founder's Day.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries, which is a good thing since they left with the proclamation. All right, next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the June 7th, 2016 city council meeting.
Your Honor, so moved. Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Demmer, any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, now we are into our consent agenda, and if you were following along at home, we added 12A to that. So we'll start with item number five. To approve a memorandum of understanding with Anoka County on a United States Department of Justice grant. The United States Department of Justice provides grants to local law enforcement organizations to address crime in communities by providing, by improving the effectiveness and efficiency of criminal justice systems, processes, and procedures. Through the fiscal year 2016 JAG, the city of Coon Rapids is eligible for a $10,380, a requirement of the US DOJ is that a single entity administer the grant and an agreement be established with Anoka County. A memorandum of understanding between Coon Rapids and Anoka County is forthcoming. No monies will be going to Anoka County per the Department of Justice allocation. A public hearing must be held regarding proposed expenditures for this grant. The Coon Rapids Police Department proposes to use JAG funds for the purchase of law enforcement equipment not otherwise budgeted. The department wishes to purchase personal protective equipment, PPE for crowd management, 10 iCop body mics, 50 Taser cartridges, Remington 870 less lethal shotgun, eight adjustable orange gun stocks for less lethal shotguns, Reconyx covert surveillance trail camera, and seven binoculars. All of this equipment will total $11,743.23, and the recommended purchases will require $1,363.23 from the police department's equipment budget. So we will be entering into a memorandum of understanding with Anoka County regarding the expenditure of funds for the 2016 Justice Assistance Grant. Next on our consent agenda is to approve a joint powers agreement with Anoka Ramsay Community College for Security Contract. The joint powers agreement between the city and state of Minnesota is reviewed and renewed each year roughly following the state's fiscal calendar and a typical school year. The current contract expires on June 30th, 2016. The new contract reflects a 2% increase in the hourly rate charged for the reserve officer and use of a vehicle. Additionally, contingency funds for special events increased from 20 hours to 90 for a total contract amount not to exceed $27,722.50. This amount will cover city costs of providing the service, and the new contract will be effective July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017. So we will be entering into a JPA with Anoka Ramsay Community College to provide security services for 2016 and 2017. Next is to accept a drainage and utility easement from John and Martha Bordwell and Tim and Stacy Lurum. On December 1st, 2015, the council approved a lot split for parcel A located at 12856 Crooked Lake Boulevard. The existing house will remain on parcel A and have frontage on Crooked Lake and 129th Avenue. Parcel B is a corner lot with frontage on 129th Avenue and Crooked Lake Boulevard. As a condition of the approval of the registered land survey, five-foot drainage and utility easements shall be provided by the property owners. So we will be accepting easements for drainage and utility purposes from Tim and Stacy Lurum and John and Martha Bordwell over portions of, I'm sorry, John and Martha Bordwell, over portions of the property on parcel A located on Crooked Lake and 129th Avenue, and parcel B, the corner lot of 129th Avenue. Next is to accept easements from Mary Kaiser and Wells Fargo Bank. And on July 16th, 2015, the planning commission approved a request for subdivision exception for a lot line adjustment between 3338 and 3352 116th Avenue. It was approved, and one of the conditions is the existing drainage and utility easements along the current lot line be vacated, and new five-foot easements be granted on either side of the new lot line. So this is to accept those easements. Next is to adopt Resolution 16-73, declaring participation with the council on local results and innovations state performance measurement program. And this is something we've been participating in since 2010, and the city, through this, the city has developed the tools necessary to participate in the program for 2016. Let's see here, in order to participate, the city must file a report with the Office of the State Auditor by July 1st. And we're looking at developing a performance measurement system and providing data for a minimum of 10 performance measures, and we're looking at adopting Resolution 16-73 to declare our participation. Next, I'm just going to read them right in order rather than trying to skip around because it just didn't make sense then. Item 10, approve memorandum of understanding between the city of Coon Rapids and Alina Health System. And this is, the 340B program is used to support Alina's program that offers free care for patients who are not eligible for Medicare or Medicaid and earn at or below 275% of the federal poverty level. Another use is the healthcare service discounts available for patients with less than $125,000 annual household income, or those with health insurance but that are receiving an uncovered service or item. The pricing is provided to outpatient drugs, which is only a portion of the hospital's drug use. Inpatient drugs are not included in the 340B program, so we will be approving that memorandum of understanding with the hospital. Accept right of entry and waiver of trespass from Anoka Hennepin Independent School District Number 11. A portion of project 16-4 across Dogwood Street Falls within the School District 11 property, we will, the attached agreement will allow city staff and the project contractor to complete necessary construction activities per the approved project plans and specifications. And item 12, consider special assessment and access agreement with Anoka Ramsay Community College. And we're looking at approving and executing the special assessment and access agreement with Anoka Ramsay Community College to complete the required private improvements under city project 16-2. And that's adding that second water main, I believe, to the college. And then the next item, and the last item on our consent agenda is item 12A. Consider Resolution 16-75, authorizing an application for livable communities for grant funds. On April 19th, the HRA and city council approved a term sheet with Minneapolis-based Sherman Associates for a residential development project adjacent to the Riverdale Transit Station on Northdale Boulevard. Sherman proposes a first phase of approximately 245 apartments in two buildings on about eight acres of the 16-acre site. On June 7th, the HRA approved purchase agreements related to this project, and the council adopted a resolution supporting a tax credit application. One of the anticipated funding sources for the project is a grant from the Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Account. The city of Coon Rapids is eligible to participate in the Livable Communities Program in 2016. Because the grant application deadline is July 1st, we are asked to adopt Resolution 16-75, which authorizes application for the funds, so this will be adopting Resolution 16-75, authorizing an application for livable communities grant funds. And that is the end of our consent agenda. Your Honor.
Counselor Johnson. I'll move approval and adoption of the entire consent agenda as amended. Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Manning. Was there a comment or a question?
No, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
On the CLRI report, I'm just curious what, on the insurance industry rating of fire services, what is four, four out of how many?
Mr. Stammer. Mayor Cook and Councilmember Manning, actually, John, Chief Piper, I should say, we're just talking about this recently, it's four out of 10, is that correct, John? Yes. So four out of 10, you want to be closer to one, so four is a, you know, seems like a, from what I can understand, it's a pretty solid number in our community, other surrounding communities are probably in that four to five range as well.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to, let's see, we have no public hearings, bid openings, old business. Consider adoption of ordinance 2169 revising ordinance 2136, correcting the legal description. And there was a delay in recording ordinance 2136 with the county. During the delay, and this is regarding the Coon Rapids Chrysler property on the corner of Egbert Boulevard and Woodcrest Drive, during the delay, the applicant recorded the final plan for the property, thereby changing the legal description of the parcel from Lot 1 Block 1 Carla D. Edition to Lot 1 Block 1 Carousel Motor Group Edition. The recording document was rejected by the county because they had the property shown with the new legal description, so we just need to approve the attached ordinance correcting the legal description.
Your Honor. Counselor Demmer. I move to approve the attached ordinance 2169 correcting the legal description in ordinance 2136.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Next on our agenda, on our new business, is the 2015 Annual Financial Statement, and we are being asked to formally accept the 2015 Annual Financial Statement. Anything we want to cover from that, or? We just did a workshop, I don't really, I don't know where you start and stop. We're doing, we're doing well, how's that? Councilman Demmer, did you have something? Or are you just going to read it to us?
Unless, yeah, filibuster. Unless Ms. Legg is going to say it, I just thought it was good to point out that it received a clean bill of health from the auditors and they, it hit sort of the highest level. I was going to try to find the exact wording, and I can't find it right away, but basically the auditor said we did a really good job, so congratulations to the team that worked on it.
Absolutely. So we need to accept.
Your Honor.
Counselor Johnson.
I move to have the council accept the 2015 Annual Financial Statement. Sir.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. Is that available in a link online, or will that be?
Yes, I think it's already out there, but it's a little tricky to get to it, but if you go to the departments and go to finance, and then you should see the 2015 Annual Financial Statement.
Okay, because that really is the core, that is all of the financials for the city, the enterprise funds, the everything. That is all of the financials for the city, the enterprise funds, the everything. So if you really want to know the inner workings, that's a really good place to go.
The budget is also out there.
Yep. Next on our agenda is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending park hours and overnight parking. And we have had some, I don't know where we're at. Yes.
Number 15.
Yes. Let's do that one first. Let's do the other 50. Consider introduction of an ordinance adopting the 2012 Minnesota State Fire Code. The Minnesota State Fire Code is incorporated into the city code by reference in the latest state fire code, the 2012 edition. You guys are kind of behind a few years.
When are you done?
Yeah, is now available and should be incorporated into the code. Also included is adoption of appendices, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L. So I'm going to just go ahead and consider this introduced and then if you have questions, go ahead.
Just one quick question. I did find the 2015 one online, so I wasn't sure if, although interestingly, the 2015 one says you can refer to the 2012 international one, but I wasn't sure if there was a reason why we're adopting the 2012 or if, when it says that's the latest, if there's a 2015 edition. Have we just not had a chance to look through the 2015? Is it too recent or? Anyone want to give me a history or something?
Councilmember Decker, councilmembers. Fire Marshal Williams would be working with the state fire marshal's office and they recently adopted the 2015, which I believe references the 2012. And we're just, this is a formal adoption of that so that we can enforce it here in Coon Rapids similar to what you did for the building code a few months ago.
So should it say 2015 here instead of 2012?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that answered the question that I had because I was like, well, didn't we just adopt that and that was the building code?
Correct.
So we did the 2015 building code, which references the 2012 fire code. So now we're bringing the 2012 fire code into our code to align with what the building code says, right?
Councilmember Geisler, not exactly.
Close enough would have been a good answer.
But no. Councilmembers, normally there is a delay from the time the code gets written at the national level till where it gets adopted at the state level, which is very recent. And then once that happens, then when we ask you to adopt what the state has adopted at the local level, so we can enforce it, if that makes sense.
All right. At any rate, that's been introduced. And I imagine we'll be looking at passing or adopting that at the next council meeting. Now we'll look at number 16, consider introduction of an ordinance amending park hours and overnight parking. And we've just had, we've had the existing ordinance discuss its neighborhood parks, community parks, athletic parks, and cornerstone parks. And the hours vary depending on the type of the park. And we're just looking at getting some consistency and getting the park hours so that no parking and the parks will be closed from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM unless otherwise authorized. Like if the ball, if the ball teams are playing at St. Creek Park, they have a permit for playing there, so that permit supersedes the park closing hours, right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, some of the ballparks will have later, the ones that have ballparks will have later hours in general during the summertime.
Okay.
So we weren't able to provide sort of that uniformity across the board, hoping for, but I think it makes much more sense now than it did under the current, or the old ordinance.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. So we will consider that ordinance introduced and we'll be looking at adoption at the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Geisler.
I think it's maybe important to make sure that we're clear that with this, it changes to no parking from the 10:00 PM to the 5:00 AM. That wasn't as clear before. And so anybody who parks overnight at a park now no longer will be able to do that.
You wouldn't think that'd be a deal, but apparently it is, so.
And to me, it's just making sure that people are aware of that and we don't want surprises.
All right. And also under new business, we're looking at introduction of an ordinance regulating predatory offenders residency. And city staff has developed an ordinance that would restrict the possible housing options for Level 3 predatory offenders. In short, this ordinance would not allow a Level 3 predatory offender to live within 2,000 feet of a school, public park, or licensed daycare. In addition, the ordinance would prohibit a Level 3 predatory offender from establishing a residence within 2,000 feet of the permanent residence of another designated predatory offender. Several exceptions to the 2,000-foot limit are contained within the ordinance, including a Level 3 offender that is already living in the city at the time the ordinance goes into effect, or a Level 3 offender who is a minor or committed the offense as a minor, or a Level 3 offender who lives with their spouse, parents, or siblings, or a Level 3 offender who lives in a residence owned by the Minnesota Department of Corrections prior to July 23rd, 2016, or if a Level 3 offender is already at a residence when a new school, park, or daycare is opened within the 2,000-foot limit. Any presentation or questions? If not, we'll consider this introduced and we'll be looking at adoption at the next Well, since I went, that's the last item on the agenda. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic? All right, let me just read our whole introduction here then, sir. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. And all remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Of course, there are no personal attacks allowed. Open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. There. Welcome, sir.
Sounds good. Greg Leon, 11710 Olive Street. And I just wanted to come in tonight and share with you guys some thoughts regarding the Met Council reform, which seems to be a pretty hot issue. I know you guys covered it. So a recent study from the center of the American experiment shows the Minneapolis-St. Paul Met Council has the largest budget in the nation by far at about $1 billion, which is more than that of 17 of the next 19 largest regional authorities combined. Also, I believe it's the only group that is unelected to, you know, to office as then they're, then they're become part of the regional authority. So I think that we in Minnesota here have let the Met Council go way too far. And to find a man who tried to stifle their ascent, we'll go back to about 1970. Mayor of Fridley then, Jack Kirkham, along with other elected officials from Blaine and Spring Lake Park, et cetera, filed a lawsuit against the Met Council for allegedly overstepping their authority when they decided to suspend a study recommended by the Metropolitan Airports Commission to look at getting a major airport in Ham Lake due to congestion at the Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport. Mayor Kirkham stated that he thought it was strange the newly formed Met Council would reject the recommendations of the Metropolitan Airports Commission as these were the people with all the expertise. "There must be something behind this," he said, "some business interest, nothing technical. They have been clutching at straws all along with their hang-up on ecology and water tables, just grasping at straws to justify their conclusions. They allow one thing on one hand and not on the other. None of their reasons are any good. So who knows what would have happened had airport, had the airports commission recommendation been pursued. Certainly, the north metro could look a lot different. Good or bad, it would, it would look different and we, we won't know." The thing that sticks out to me from Mayor Kirkham's thoughts is why does this appointed group of individuals have such great power? I can't even begin to imagine what he would think now. So I'm disappointed with the council's decision to align Coon Rapids' position on Met Council reform with that of the metro cities and not the county coalition. Our regional authority, at the very least, needs to be accountable to the people. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else here to address open mic?
My name is Jennifer Perna and I live at 1456 121st Avenue. And I'm here to talk about an accident involving my 16-year-old son on December 20th, 2015. He was walking down a BNSF railroad track near Northdale Boulevard and was hit and killed. He was listening to earbuds. He had taken the path adjacent to the railroad, went up the fencing along the tunnel, and then walked down the middle of the tracks. And I would like for you to consider fencing barriers or signs to keep other kids, adults off the tracks. There is a memorial up there that his friends have put up there that I, I go there daily. And I see kids, teenagers, adults, with animals. And for the city's safety, I would just ask that you consider putting fencing barriers or signs. Thank you.
Anybody else here to address open mic?
Not if to reread this disclaimer, do I, Mr. Brownlee?
Scott Brownlee, 514 Northdale Boulevard. Just coming up here regarding the shopping center on the shopping center, the Tom Thumb buildings across the street on both sides of the road. And we talked in the past about having a median regarding the frontage road or backage road. I'd really like to be able to try to initiate that. We've had some things going on at the shopping center and we just wanted to see if the city's open to that frontage road because now we're going to be really bottlenecked on Northdale. No turn lanes, no nothing going into the shopping center. And I, I just think it's real important for the survival of the shopping center that we at least take a look. If we're not going to, that's fine, but I just need to have some way to do it or if I'm not going to stick any more money into the shopping center. Also with, with the Tom Thumb, how the city really stepped up and helped with the, with median and really helped with my times with my buyer and was able to sell that, that building. But then what happened after the buyer bought the building, we got canceled because it's going to take another year for the, the road. So it got canceled and I just wish it would be a little bit more business friendly. It wasn't anything on the city, it was just they called the county and I thought it was this year and it ended up going up to another year. So I just, you know, right there with me and my partners, we own 13 acres. We own on both sides of Northdale, both sides of Foley. And we just want to have that, you know, we think it's an important part. I've been there for 35 years. I've been a resident for 45 years. And I just don't want the shopping center just to go away. So if there's any ideas or anything we can help with it, I'm just looking at the city to see what we can do to, to work with it. And that bottleneck is really tough for people and kids to take a left to come in with no turn lane. I know like with the new park, it's lights and nice turn lane, but with that shopping center not having a turn lane and now having the access point cut off by the McDonald's, it's, it's really going to create more of a bottleneck and it's already tough to take a left in or, or, you know, right, or try to go to shortstop or try to get into the shopping center in the evenings. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brownlee. Anybody else here to address counsel for open mic? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. And I don't think we have any responses. So we are to other business. Wow, it's so quiet. Somebody must have something for other business beside Mike, beside me. Chief Piper?
Mayor, councilmembers, I think this is a good time to remind the citizens of Coon Rapids that the carnival's coming up. And July 2nd, which should be the Saturday, is going to be the 5K and the parade in the afternoon. Then Sunday will be a normal day. And then of course, Monday, the 4th, at 10 o'clock is the fireworks display, which is supported by the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. So we're hoping for good weather and it should be quite an event. And as most people already know, the location moved last year up to the new ice arena, the Coon Rapids Ice Center up on Crooked Lake Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard. So we invite everybody out for July 2nd through July 4th.
And I would only beg to differ that July 3rd isn't just another day because it's the craft fair in the morning and the car show at night, you know?
Thank you for that, for that information.
Well, I had all my notes, I was ready. All right. Other business, Councilman Wells, did you have something or were you going to mention that?
I figured you were going to bring that up, yes. As long as you ask, concerts in the park, we've had two weeks now, Thursday nights, beautiful weather, great attendance, and I think this is going to be nice again Thursdays. That was Coon Rapids, Dan.
Excellent. So I just had just a couple other quick things here. And one is a reminder that Night to Unite will be Tuesday, August 2nd. So how long do they have to get signed up for that? They'll want to do that sometime in July, pretty soon?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. And the, everything's all online now, so just go to the police department website and you can take a look. And then as long as I have the camera on me, is that this Police Citizens Academy also will be this fall beginning in September. If you're interested in learning how your police department operates, you also can sign up for that online on our website.
And then I was also going to ask about those tracks up from Northdale. There was a, a video that somebody posted online of a whole group of kids like walking north up the tracks and one of them was walking a bike and it's just a little troubling. And I'm just wondering how much that is becoming a thoroughfare or a walking path there and if there's something we can do to discourage that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify for one second, is that walking on railroad property is trespassing. There does not need to be a sign, there does not be a notice there, it is trespassing, it is violation of Minnesota statutes, misdemeanor. People need to stay off the railroad tracks, they're going to get hurt or tragically worse. So we're obviously very aware of it from the incident that happened last fall and we will do our best to make sure something like that is not repeated. People need to stay off though and talk to your kids about staying off the railroad tracks.
That was, I mean, I remember when my, I grew up with a very healthy respect of trains. You know, it was, I didn't know it was trespassing, I just knew you didn't want to be near the tracks.
Can I add one other thing?
Sure.
Is that what's, what's different today is, is exactly as she said at the lecture and is that earbuds, when you're walking away from a train, you can't hear it. And it, it seems not intuitive that a big rumbling, several hundred thousand pound device ought to be able to hurt, heard or felt. You do not. And, and you have to respect the power of those trains and know that there's nothing you can do about it to get out of the way. You just have to stay off the tracks.
Thank you. The last thing I've got to announce is Muddy Cow, the new sports pub in Coon Rapids, is opening Monday, June 27th. That's the old Tequila Berry's site. And it's so awesome to have something new in there again. And everybody's really excited, so I'm looking forward to it. Any other business? Hearing none? Look for a motion to adjourn? Motion by Geisler, second by Decker to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.